Welcome to the Deerfield Planning Board on April 12, 2021 at, well, I have 6:59, so maybe it's almost seven.
I have seven.
All right.
Denise is.
Good to go.
All right, meetings normally held at municipal offices are being held remotely with adequate alternate means of public access and where required, public participation provided in accordance with official order suspending of our open meeting law. And meetings are typically broadcast on on track this see that yet, but maybe they'll be coming. And most of the elections are voted on by DeerfieldMA.us. So I'll begin with a roll call, Paul, Alex. Max Antis.
Max Antis is here.
Yay, hi, Max. Rachel Blaine.
Rachel Blaine here.
Hey, hi, Rachel. Anne Mary. Not yet, maybe. Denise Mason.
Denise Mason here, and you know, if you're not talking, can you put your stuff on mute because someone's giving us a lot of feedback, please? I'm sorry.
Kathy Wetruba. Oops, who now is unmuted.
Kathy Wetruba here.
Thank you, Annalee Wolf will hear. So we do have five people out of seven, so we do have a quorum.
Anne Mary is here.
Hi, Anne Mary, I'm here. Anne Mary Cludier.
Yes, hi, Anne Mary. Thank you. Six people out of seven with our majority then for voting will be four. So reviewing the mail. We did receive a letter from the Massachusetts Attorney General with issues regarding two warrants that we approved at our special town meeting last October. Our floodplain bylaw.
Yeah.
Pardon me? Oops, our floodplain bylaw. We had an incorrect building code reference and on our marijuana overlay district zoning bylaw, we missed a legal posting. So actions have been taken by town hall staff to correct the postings. So you will see possibly even some other postings, some publications in the newspaper. This is all in accordance with what the Attorney General has requested. So that it can then go forward and actually it will be finalized within 20 days, 21 days of the final official posting. Anybody have any questions about that or elaborations from town? No. Okay, thank you. Minutes, Anne Mary.
I think that everyone has seen them, so I'm going to move to approve the minutes from April 5.
May I have a second?
Denise is seconding.
Denise, can you unmute?
Glad I was muted when I respond. Yeah, I seconded it to Denise Mason.
Just a point of question with open meeting laws, I mean, if we have questions, we can reply back when they, just to you. No, we just have to wait until we have discussion here. Okay, so are there any corrections then? In our discussion? No. Okay, so we'll change our alphabetical order a little bit. We'll start this time with Rachel. For approval of the minutes.
I, Rachel Blaine.
Anne Mary.
Anne Mary Cludier, I.
Denise.
Denise Mason, I.
Kathy.
Kathy Wetruba, I.
Annalee, I, and Max Antis.
Max Antis, I.
Okay, so the minutes are approved. Thank you. Old business. The only thing, very little that I have here primarily, I believe, at least as of this morning, we still need two more signatures on our 51 Sugarloaf AMR. That the documents for signing have sort of come out sequentially rather than some of them being all at once. So for some of you who only signed one, we need some more signatures and we also need one more signature on the special permit. So if you haven't been in to sign yet anything, we need these signatures ASAP. Yes, Anne Mary.
You were, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. If you're done reminding everybody to go in, then I wanted to go back to mail because there was a piece of email that I think everybody got today and I wanted to make sure that everybody got it and call attention to it before we move on.
Okay, let me just finish then with the discussion, which isn't really old business, but a good reason to come in to sign the documents is we have a pretty hefty packet of information from Treehouse and they will be presenting at our next meeting and those also are on the table waiting to be picked up. So if you, it's a good reason, you'll need to get in there early so you can start reading this. Anne Mary, maybe did I miss that? What was, if you would like to go forward with what that mail was, unless you're talking about for the accessory apartments?
Yeah, that, yep.
Oh, okay, I was thinking we would address that during our accessory apartment.
Fantastic. I just wanted to acknowledge that as a piece of, that it came in as a piece of mail.
Yeah, I, it's always nice to have a Does anyone else have any old business? I don't think so for the, oh, Jen?
I just wanted to say if anybody wants electronic copies of the Treehouse application, I can also send that along if that's helpful.
If you have a lot of space in your computer.
Or just ask Sue and she can send it.
Okay. So let's move on now to our public hearing as we've had in the past for our public hearings on bylaws. We will open the public hearing, then ask public members of the public to give comments. Hopefully they can be succinct and respectful of other comments that have been given. If we start having a lot of repetition, then we can, as a group, discuss closing the public hearing. And then when we do have our we then could, at the end of our public hearing, we can either continue the public hearing, we can vote on deliberating some changes that are less restrictive than what had originally been posted and at which point then those bylaws could go on to town warrant. Or if the bylaws that we're considering adjustments to are more restrictive, we'll have to have a new public hearing. So I believe that's the process if everyone's okay with that. All right, so I would like to open the public hearing and this is a public hearing on our accessory apartment bylaws. Chris Curtis is here. Chris, do you want to make any sort of introduction?
Sure. We have been working on a set of accessory apartment bylaw amendments. And a big part of this was to bring the town's bylaw into conformance with the new changes to the State Zoning Act, which specifically enabled accessory apartments to be permitted in communities and established some fairly clear definitions of terms for accessory apartment, including the size of apartments and other related dimensional requirements. So the bylaw is an amendment to the town's existing bylaws to achieve those kinds of goals and to set standards for all accessory apartments that are consistent with the state law.
Thank you, Chris. They have been reviewed by our town council, so I think have passed that one. Was there a question? No, that's just the background. Okay, so we could have public comments. I think there's few enough people that you can just raise your hand. Like such as Robin Sherman, welcome.
Hi, thanks very much for the opportunity to comment and thank you for your service. I sent an email earlier today, so I'm, hopefully you all have that and I'm not going to go ahead and read it. Just by way of introduction, I, my husband, Rob Allen, and I own our property at 11 Juniper Drive, which we purchased in 2011, lived there full time till 2015 when we relocated out of state for both family and work reasons. We live in Alaska. My husband's from here. We have elderly parents and relatives on both ends of the country and have been trying to balance that and our responsibilities to our family. Our long-term plan is always to come back to our property at 11 Juniper Drive, but it's taking us a little longer to do that than we had hoped or intended just for personal reasons. In the past, we have long-term caretakers at our property who live there free of rent. It's an arrangement that's worked out for both of us and you'll hear, they're here on the call, so you'll hear from them. It has worked out for us logistically and it's also important to us. We really want to create affordable housing for other people in Deerfield. In the past, we, when we have been on the East Coast to visit our family and to take care of our family, we've actually stayed on our property. That's really no longer feasible due to the pandemic and to the fact that our caretakers now have a growing family of their own. We have been looking for an opportunity to create an accessory apartment for our own use at our property. The property is well-suited for that. It is three acres. It's got three existing outbuildings and plenty of space. It would be easy to create an accessible apartment on our property without impacting any of the neighbors. And it really wouldn't be for rental. It would be for our own use so that we could come and go without disturbing our caretakers. I think the accessory apartment is great in general. I'm completely in favor of it. I do have a concern about the language that would require property owners to certify that they would be using that the accessory apartment would be for use as their permanent or primary residence. And the reference to only absences to only for legitimate reasons, I think, or bona fide reasons. I think, you know, the town doesn't really want to be in the business of determining how often property owners are staying on their own property and whether they're absent for legitimate reasons and how much time they're absent for. So I would just ask that you consider a slight revision to the bylaw. I don't have any problem saying that one of the apartments or one of the units on the property has to be for the owner's use. So effectively you can only rent one of them. And then if your goal is to limit the use, to limit short-term rentals, you can just add that as, you know, a part of the special permit. So if you don't want the unit that is for the owner's use to be used as a short-term rental, you could require specific approval for that and put conditions on it. So that's really what I had to say. It would be very helpful if you could pass this with this change. It would give us the opportunity to use our property and still have our caretakers there, which is good for them and good for us and is creating affordable housing. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Robin. We have, I think what we will do is accept all of the public comments. Or would the planning board prefer to ask questions after each one? Why don't we then go forward with more public comments and and then we'll have discussion. Okay, other comments? No. Okay. Oh, Chris, all right, Chris?
Yeah, I was, I was just waiting for others, sorry. No, I had, I had only flagged two things in this and number one was in 3934, which the previous resident talked about in terms of except for bona fide temporary absences. I mean, it's kind of a catch-all phrase, but it can be a little vague and it can get into like this gray area. And so her suggestion that that be folded into the special permit process maybe makes sense. It's a little bit edgy there. But then in six and seven, there might be, and Chris praise can look at this, there might be a little redundancy in six and seven because the report refers to 50% of the area and then it refers to 900 and north of mid. I think there's a redundancy between the two clauses in 3934, six and seven. Otherwise, I thought it was pretty good.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Nate?
Sure, thanks for the opportunity to come here. They recognize I'm coming from, I'm living in Robin and Rob's house on Juniper Drive. And yeah, so my wife and I are residents of Deerfield. We're both students and been lucky enough to find this caretaking opportunity in exchange for, you know, living here and to caretake in the property. And it's really the only way that both of us have been able to afford. Living as students, we know like we have a three-month-old daughter and we love living here. I work here. And my generation of peaking is a 30-something. We haven't had the fortune. My parent generation worship and I think this ability that the town has to create opportunities for more affordable housing through accessory dwelling would be a real benefit to a lot of us younger folk who are trying to live here and ultimately own our own homes. I support the bylaw. I do, I do support it with the revision that Robin mentioned earlier. So that's all for me.
Thank you, Nate. Jennifer?
Trevor has his hand raised.
Pardon me?
Trevor has his hand raised.
Up in that corner. Hi, Trevor.
Hi, how are you? I just wanted to speak in favor of this bylaw. This was something I had hoped would come about and I'm really grateful the board is moving in this direction. I think, you know, just based on Nate's comments alone, this is exactly what I see. And also with, especially in this past year where people need to, you know, families used to live together and support each other, raising their children, taking care of their parents, taking care of an elderly. There's so many reasons why we need to come back together as a community and as families together under one roof or multiple roofs. But I just think the support of each other and their families, it's super important to have a space to be able to to bring mom or dad back home, you know, after maybe one passes away or as you have kids coming back after college and trying to get on their feet before they move on. Having a space for them to do that or caretake, you know, on a piece of property as others are moving around and doing different businesses. I think it does allow, one, a bit of a more affordable place to get younger families and all into here and also ways to take care of either elderly or hurt family or any other reasons that we need to pull together as families and and as a community. So I'm really in favor of the bylaw. So just wanted to speak on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Trevor. See, we have any other hands? Oh, Jen?
Hi, so the building commissioner and I were discussing this and we were saying that maybe an alternative to the way that the bylaw stands right now is to say that one of the units has to be owner occupied. So doesn't mean necessarily the, where like Nate and his family are living right now? Or is it the accessory apartment? Just one of them has to be because then you know that somebody that's caring for the property is living there. Because the, the whole idea of having it owner occupied is that somebody is actually taking care of the property and maintaining it and will take care of snow removal and leave removal and, and maintenance issues that may come up. Because if both of the units are not owner occupied and it's just a two-family rental and it, there's no saying that there will be that maintenance level. So just something to take into consideration because then it sort of makes it better for the situation that I think it's Rhiannon is in at the moment.
Chris?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think it's tricky business on this owner occupied situation because I've actually lived this in my life a long time in California where I had properties there. And because of work, I was abroad and so I was leasing these places out furnished. And so obviously you have a high-level qualification for who you lease them to and then you set up maintenance structures if you don't negotiate that with who's renting from them. But, you know, when you start looking and trying to maintain properties, yeah, there has to be some give and take here in terms of maintaining them and still getting enough income to do that high-level maintenance. So all I would say is it's, it's not just a straightforward deal on these types of things. I know over the years and then I've gone back to live at those properties. And I feel like it's similar situation as the first person was talking about where ideally they want to come back to Deerfield someday, but they want to hold their property and maintain it and have flexibility in how they do that. So, so again, you know, owner occupied, I mean, in quotes, in terms of is it being owner managed? Is also important for these temporary interlude situations, but I guess that's redundant. It happened with, with, you know, you end up on a four-year assignment somewhere even. It does happen. It's reality.
Jen?
So I've seen this in the past and a lot of times what happens is you have somebody that's considered management for the property. So this is the rental registration program in the former town that I worked in. And so they would have a manager that was within 20 miles of the property that would need to fill out a paper and have a phone number that this paper needed to be posted for any resident that was living in either one of the homes. In order for somebody to be able to either, you know, if it's, let's say there's a fire there and they don't know who to contact because the owner records in another state. Or there's a maintenance issue or a pipe burst or, you know, on and on and on. There's so many things that can go on. So if there's somebody that's local within 20 miles that is certifying that they're going to be able to take care of this property, I can see the situation that you're saying, Chris Harris. But other than that, it's, it's like, it's hard to say that somebody is going to manage their lease when they're thousands of miles away. They just don't see what's happening currently at the property. Anyway, so that's my two cents. I work with thousands of rental properties, so.
So it sounds like we've had a number of concerns about the owner occupied issue and then also the question of whether or not a couple of the bylaws might be redundant in terms of the dimensions and size. Are there any other areas of concern, Chris?
Mary has her hand raised.
I'm going to wait until after a public comment. Sorry.
Thank you, Anne Mary. Chris?
The only, the only other thing I had to say was, yeah, I mean, I totally am agreeing. Sorry, I had my hand up before. Sorry, Chris Curtis. But the only thing is, I totally agree with the idea of documenting exactly who's in these properties at any time and having local management accessible, et cetera. Totally agree with that. You need to know who is in these properties for emergency purposes at all time. And that needs to, that needs to always be part of any, any situation where there's even a rental involved.
I'll say exactly that in terms of having a registry, but it does not seem to be something that would be included in the bylaws. It would be more of a procedural thing. Yes, I, we all feel very supported with that. Chris Curtis, another Chris.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to respond to a couple of the questions and maybe try to clarify a couple of things. On the issue of the potential redundancy question in 3934, number six and number seven, those are not redundant. Number six is referring to the situation where there's in addition to an original building being proposed. And in that case, the addition has to not increase the floor area of the original building by more than 50%. Number seven is referring to accessory apartments, including those that might be within an existing building. And the size of those must have a floor area not larger than half the floor area of the principal dwelling. So one's talking about additions and one's talking about the broader range of possibilities. So they're not redundant in that regard. In regard to the comment that the owner of the residence, one of the units must be owner occupied, but it could be either one of them. That is already actually provided for in the bylaw in 3934, number four, where it says, "The owner of the residence in which the accessory apartment is located shall occupy at least one of the dwelling units on the premises." So we have addressed that question. And I think, you know, in regard to the question about the owner occupied issue, we've talked about this at some length. It's, it's the intention of the bylaw to allow these accessory apartments in neighborhoods across town, including neighborhoods that have been traditionally single-family neighborhoods. So we're introducing an apartment into a single-family neighborhood in many cases. We are trying to avoid the situation where we start having multifamily housing in single-family neighborhoods and the associated problems with that where you don't have an owner occupancy. You potentially have issues of noise and loud music and all kinds of things like that that you might have to deal with. So we felt, I think in the previous discussions anyway, that the owner occupancy requirement was really fundamental to allowing these to happen in neighborhoods where they wouldn't otherwise be allowed. For other circumstances, such as some of the ones that have been described, I would say the town has a provision for two-family dwellings and those are allowed by special permit and, and an owner could apply for a special permit in a circumstance like that to, to have a two-family dwelling and to meet those standards, in which case the owner occupancy requirement would not be an issue. So I wanted to just try to address some of those questions.
Robin?
It's my understanding, and perhaps somebody from the town can correct me if I'm wrong, but the last time I checked, which was not super recently, I don't believe that a two-family home was a use that was permitted by special permit in the district where we own our house. Can anybody speak to that?
Yeah. Yeah, we have no two families allowed in the residential agricultural area. I believe it's only the central village area where you can do the two-family multifamily. I don't have my zoning book in front of me, but definitely not in the residential agricultural area. Single-family homes only.
May I continue?
Thank you, Robin.
So with your permission, this, I've been looking at this for a couple of years now, you know, and if there was a two-family option, we'd be happy to apply for that option. I understand the theory behind owner occupancy, but I would submit, you know, and having lived on that property for four years, I can tell you that, you know, the home, some of the homes on our street were owner occupied, some were renter occupied. And it just happened to be that the noise problem came from an owner occupied unit. So I don't think that, you know, renters are any more or less likely to create problems than homeowners. I think it's really a matter of different individuals. And, you know, I don't have a problem with the owner occupancy requirement. The problem, the concern that I have about this bylaw is it speaks to how often an owner needs to be present on their own property, which is certainly not. If this were a single-family home and I was just renting it, you know, that's essentially you know, that's essentially the situation we have now, except our tenants don't pay rent. You know, this would be adding an apartment that we could use. We're not planning to rent it. You could, you know, put a condition on it that says we can't rent it and we would, you know, accept that. I don't see how that's different from renting out a single family house as opposed to a unit in a single family house. One way or the other, you're going to have a renter there and a renter may be noisy or a homeowner might be noisy. And I don't think that adding 900 square foot units to a few homes in Deerfield by special permit is going to fundamentally change the character of anybody's neighborhood, especially if you have an owner occupancy requirement. The issue that I have is the town trying to control if we were to have an accessory apartment, how often we are there. Because that's really a matter of people's individual circumstances. And, you know, one year we could be there, you know, seven months of the year. And another year we could be there four months of the year. And that, that's just recognizing the flexibility that people need in their lives.
Thank you, Robin. Yes, Jen.
So I think Chris mentioned that before. You could have one of the unit as being owner occupied. And so it wouldn't be restrictive to the amount of time that you were there or not there.
It, that's how the bylaw reads right now. The way the bylaw reads right now, it says that one of the owner units needs to be owner occupied and it has to be occupied as a primary or permanent residence. And the owner has to be there except for bona fide, you know, legitimate absences. And that, that's the language that I have the concern about, not the requirement for owner occupancy. It's for saying it needs to be your permanent primary residence and you need to be there all the time, except for bona fide reasons.
Chris, can you speak on that behalf? Chris Curtis.
Chris Curtis, yes.
Well, again, I guess I would just be repeating what I said earlier. I think there's a legitimate reason for having that provision in the bylaw. And I mentioned it, described it previously. Because we have many of these units would be going into primarily single family neighborhoods. It would be potentially changing the character of the neighborhood. And that this is a provision to protect really the neighborhoods and the existing homes there. So we're writing the bylaw not to try to provide for individual, an individual circumstance like the one that's being described here. But really, it's a bylaw that's intended to protect the town and a bylaw that's designed to address concerns of all the neighborhoods and the residences in town, not just an individual circumstance.
Jen.
Also, something to keep in mind is that I know that we're looking at, Robin, your situation, but everybody's situation is different. So how does a town write a bylaw that can help many people and not just one situation? And also the evolution of time and the way that the town is going in the future. So we have to look at sort of things that can change and what sort of environment we want for the town and how to be helpful to families that are now needing to, you know, have a situation that it's getting harder and harder to keep a home just by yourself. And so extended families are starting to move into town. And that's really the intent of this is to have those accessory apartments for multi generational families living together. And it's a different situation when you become just a rental property. And having the owner of the property living somewhere else and not managing it. And something that we've talked about in the past that isn't current, that could be in the future, is having a rental bylaw in the town where you can register your property and have it have certain regulations for health and safety and cleanliness. And so we've talked about that at this point, but, you know, moving in that direction.
Well, I'll add to that. And then maybe Rachel. We did have quite a bit of discussion about the scope of these bylaws, especially Chris, you had made some suggestions earlier in our process. And there was recognition that we're, as Jennifer is saying, we're trying to have movement and make sure that the town is moving along at the same pace and the planning board is moving along at the same pace as the town. Rachel?
I think that the, shoot, the, we want to be careful not to write a sort of a bylaw that makes it seem like we've changed the zoning into a two family households. So I think that that's what we're, we're really in our intention. Now, I do, we did talk about registering various rental properties and that might actually serve this person, Robin, well, in the sense that that could be clarified in a statement of intention. I think that we're really not, I mean, Trevor's pointing out that it's great to have this. Well, we have had an accessory bylaw. We have had this on the books. We're expanding something that was on the books. You could make a small apartment for your family member previously. We just couldn't do anything after the family member wasn't there anymore. Now we're making it so the family member moves on. You still have an apartment that is viable. It's not just vestigial. And I think that moving in that direction has been very positive. But I'm not sure that when we set out to create this, we were really creating a new, a new, basically, a new understanding of two, two family dwellings. And I don't think that's what you're really talking about here, Robin. I think you're really talking about this is yours. And that's, nobody else is moving into it. It's yours. It's not your primary in the sense that you're spending your most time there, but it is only for you, that apartment, the accessory part of the department.
Denise.
I was just thinking, so Robin, so, you know, obviously you're in Alaska and you eventually want to move back. So if you did move back, wouldn't you want to move into your primary residence? And then what would happen to the one that you would build?
Robin.
So I will, I will get to your question. I'm sorry about the feedback. I, before I do that, I want to observe that, you know, unless you are creating an accessory apartment in an existing structure, this is a special permit process. And most single family homes are not big enough to create an accessory apartment. So most of them are requiring an addition. So having this special permit really allows the town an enormous amount of flexibility to control where these apartments go and what the conditions are on them. It's not like if you pass this bylaw, you suddenly have to issue special permits for any property in any district, in any situation in the town. I do fully appreciate that you're trying to write a bylaw that is in the interest of most, you know, the whole town, the town as a whole, and that you want to be careful to protect neighborhoods. That's all fine. But it's good to write a bylaws to give yourselves flexibility to respond to different circumstances. And you can write, you know, almost whatever conditions you want to, as long as they're reasonable in the permit. Denise, to answer your question, for the next, you know, several years, while we both have elderly parents on both sides of the country, it's a little bit of a toss up, you know, how often we're going to be at our property and when. It's, it's just not entirely predictable. It's also not entirely predictable with respect to both of our careers. So that's why we're looking to have the opportunity to come and go for our property for a while. When we move back on a permanent basis, we would want to reoccupy our main house. And at that time, you know, we could come to the, if we had an accessory apartment, we could come to the town and say, okay, now we want to rent this out or we want to change the use or fold it into our existing property. But right now, the way this bylaw is written, if we wanted to pursue this option, we really, the way the bylaw is written, we can't do that without saying, you know, we're going to move back first and make this our primary residence and commit to it. And my only option right now, we can't use our property while our caretakers are there. And they're doing a great job and we love having them there. And we don't want to say, sorry, you need to move so that we can come back to our house. We're going to put on an addition and after that you may be able to come back. And I understand that not everybody is in that situation. And you don't want to write a bylaw for my individual situation. All I'm saying is people have very different circumstances. And if you write the bylaw to give whoever the permit agency is, whether it's the planning board or the zoning board of appeals and the building inspector, the flexibility to look at what kind of a neighborhood is this? Does an accessory apartment make sense? Do the neighbors have concerns about it? How do we address that in the permit? And I think that the language you have now is sufficiently restrictive that it wouldn't help us in our situation. So if we can't move back within a few years, we're just going to have to either sell our property or ask our caretakers to leave and rent our property. And then you really will be in the situation where you have renters and a distant owner who doesn't know what's going on on the property.
Thank you, Robin. Are there any other new comments or?
Anne Mary has her hand raised. Oh, Anne Mary?
Again, I will wait until you, it sounds like you're about to close public comment, so I'll just wait.
I think so. If that's, I don't, Gary? Almost.
Almost. Am I there?
There you go.
Um, you know, I don't want to get off on a tangent, but it seems like the issue isn't about the building. The issue is about who's going to come into your house and tell you what to do. And, you know, everybody does have a different thing going on in their life. And no two people here are going to have the exact same thing happening in their life. So how do you, you know, tell somebody what they can do and what they can't do with their own property? You know, if their family needs to be brought together, if this woman here who has a caretaker, I mean, all these things are all valid and everybody's going to have to deal with, with what comes into their own life. And it seems like there's part of this bylaw that is kind of taking it, going into people's rights. Like somebody's got to go into somebody's home and tell them that they can or they can't do something. And that, that becomes a very touchy issue, I think. And if there could be a way to, you know, work it from the outside in instead of the inside out, it might be a little easier for people to digest and go along. But, you know, like I said, every, everybody's going to have their own issues and they're going to have to deal with them in their own personal way. And how, how far is the government going to come in and, and help us out? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all for all the work you do here. People don't realize how hard it is.
We, we'd like to have people show up, that's for sure. All right. I think that it seems that we had some pretty thorough conversation with the people who are here. I think unless there's more burning issues, if I could have a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Thank you, Anne Mary. A second.
A second.
Denise Mason. Second. Thank you. And any more discussion about closing the public hearing? Okay, so we'll have a vote on closing the public hearing. Rachel?
Rachel Blaine, aye.
Anne Mary Cludier?
Anne Mary Cludier, aye.
We're all getting good at reading lips here. Denise Mason?
Denise Mason, aye.
Kathy Witroba?
Kathy Witroba, aye.
Emily Wolfco, aye. Max Antis?
Max Antis, aye.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing by unanimous vote. And so now we will, so thank you all for participating too. I, I think that they were some, we had some very clear and well thought out comments. So now we will, I believe the next thing is to actually have a deliberation on the, the bylaws and if in fact there are some amendments that we feel should be made to the bylaws as they stand. So this would be discussion with the planning board and with the planning board.
I would like to respond because I really want to bring us back to purpose. The number one is to provide homeowners with a means of obtaining through tenants and accessory dwellings, rental income, companionship, security and services, and thereby to enable them to stay more comfortably in homes and neighborhoods they might otherwise be forced to leave. This, my draft says March 21st. And I think I'm looking at the most current draft. And if that's the purpose of this law, then I feel like this conversation may have taken us in a different direction from the intention of the law, which isn't a rental bylaw, right? It's an accessory apartment. And maybe I have a misunderstanding about that. But I think that that would be governed by a whole separate section. So we're not trying to create a rental bylaw. We're trying to create an accessory dwelling towards the purpose that's stated, right? And, you know, I have lived abroad. I've owned property here in the United States while living abroad. I understand the particulars of being away and having a management company. And do you rent? Do you leave it empty? I understand that. And where do you come home to when your contract is over? But once again, I'm not sure that this law is written towards this purpose. So I understand the, you know, feeling stymied like that. But I guess as a board, I want us to really stay on track for who this, this law is written for. It's written for low income. It's written to keep families together. It's written, you know, for more than, you know, really just kind of one person and their particular situation. And I want them to stay like, I want them to be part of our community. And I certainly, you know. But I feel the purpose of the law may be different than the purpose of the letter that we received and the purpose of, you know, the people who've spoken here tonight.
Thank you, Anne Mary. Some other comments. Kathy?
I fully agree with that. In my notes, I wrote, what is the purpose of the accessory apartment? And the purpose is to help individuals, right? So they used to be called in-law apartments. That's what they used to be called. And that phrase says an awful lot, right? So families stayed within a home. And, you know, when you have elderly parents that are on fixed income and you have a young family who can't afford to buy a house and it's a, it's a nice and it's a safe community, you know, this is a way to meet those needs. And I think, you know, we need to focus on this community, the community of Deerfield. What are the needs that we're trying to meet within this community? And stay focused on the purpose. What is our purpose and what is our goal for the accessory apartment? I mean, I think there are extenuating circumstances that can really go in an awful lot of directions. And, you know, one of the terms that was used was flexibility. You know, what is the flexibility? But that's a defined term too. I mean, we can define legitimate. We can define bona fide. We can define flexibility too, like we can do this all day long. So I think we have to stay focused on what our goal is, which is the accessory apartment, allowing affordable housing, staying within families and not, you know, being careful how far we go out. I think Rachel Blaine also brought up a point about zoning. I mean, that's, that's another piece that will come into play as it relates to where we can do this and how it's going to be done. And, and, you know, again, back to staying focused on it, the purpose, our community and, and what, how we can support the families that are presently here.
Thank you, Kathy. Other comments? I think I'll add that the comment of trying not to have these properties that have more than one unit on them just become rental properties that resonated with me. Rachel?
Well, and one other concern too, I think, I'm not entirely sure why the, anyway, you, we have a You, we have a parking issue. This was brought up last time and we talked about it very briefly. And if you start to have, you know, parking is kind of something that is worked out with, with people who live together, who have a relationship. And in this accessory apartment situation, and I think this is a good example, but there are many examples that will be working out their parking relationship with the two. That there's not, you know, it's not a generous parking explanation. We have, we have a parking, like, section, I don't know what section it is. Anyway, these are the kinds of things that need to be worked out with an owner, with somebody who's the owner, who's working it through. And that's just another concern, came up last meeting. And I think it is another pointer toward making certain that this does stay kind of in the realm of accessory apartments for now. I mean, if we're changing zoning, we're changing zoning. But if this is a different, bird of a different feather.
Thank you, Rachel. All right. Are there other comments from the planning board? All right, then I think we would have a motion to, well, I believe it would be a motion to place the bylaw on the warrant as written for town meeting. Without, and at this point, we're not, to my knowledge, we did talk some about some redundancies, which Chris clarified. I don't think there are any other edits that we're suggesting, are there? Am I overlooking, Chris, maybe, is there any, are there any edits that, last minute edits that I'm missing? Or Rachel?
Well, we're not putting any, last week Lisa suggested we put something in about, or was it a separate bylaw about registry of rental properties?
My understanding was that we would have that be something that we would address internally with town administration and have it be, I don't know, part of the process. I don't know if you can address that, or Chris?
Didn't she suggest?
Chris, do you want to speak on that?
Well, on the first question, there aren't any additional that are changes that need to be made, to my knowledge. In terms of the registration for two-family dwellings or rental units, I do think that was discussed as another separate bylaw that could be considered at a future date by the planning board. And you might want to engage Jennifer or myself in helping to craft that. But I think that's a separate discussion in a future bylaw.
Agreed.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so we would be having a motion to place this bylaw as stated on warrant for town meeting. I believe that's the, the.
Yeah, I think that's the verbiage. So I'll make, I'll make a motion to place the bylaw as written on the warrant for town meeting.
Thank you, Rachel. Or Anne Mary, do we have a second?
I'll second it, then, that's for the, Rachel.
Thank you, Rachel. So we will, is there any more further discussion? Okay, so we'll vote. Rachel Blaine?
Rachel Blaine, aye.
Anne Mary Cludier?
Anne Mary Cludier, aye.
Denise Mason?
Denise Mason, aye.
Kathy Witroba?
Kathy Witroba, aye.
Emily Wolfcool, aye. Max Antis?
Max Antis, no.
Okay, so the motion passes, is it 510? Is that correct? No, there's six of us here. All right, thank you. And thank you again to everyone who participated in that conversation. I was really impressed with the thought, the thought of it. New business. And we do have representatives, members of our select board to present the discussion of the proposed bylaw. It is on our agenda that you all received. And it would be something that I understand planning board will be, would be presenting to the town at the town meeting. So even though it didn't originate with us. So Trevor and/or Carolyn, whoever wants to go first, Trevor?
Yeah, Casey's here as well to speak on the issue. And so we were hoping, and I'll just make a statement and let Carolyn and Casey take over. This was a request we were going to make through to the planning board. We have quite a few projects coming forward from the town that may require some alterations to frontage or setbacks. And we felt, while we wanted to have some flexibility, we did want to have oversight, not something that the select board would just move ahead on, on any whim, but to have partnership with the planning board in deciding these matters. So many towns ask for some relief from certain zoning requirements when it comes to municipal projects. And this is one area that we would like to do that. I think I'd let, you know, Casey and Carolyn were a little bit more involved with that. So maybe I'll pass the baton.
Yeah.
Well, there really isn't, I mean, we just have a multitude of projects potentially coming down. You know, the library project, senior center, the church. The library, if we go forward with the library, we have to find a temporary spot. So, you know, Cumberland Farms had been suggested. And, you know, we have senior housing, we have the park. So we decided what we would not ask for, we would have the same setbacks that already exist. Because most, most of the projects are going to be in the South Deerfield Village District, which has a 25-foot setback. So what we decided to do was just take project by project on the setbacks and just maintain the 25-foot setback. But the frontage, we would like to have reduced to 50 feet. So, which is essentially access. And, and just go from there. The idea is to have some flexibility. So I didn't, I don't know if you have any questions or?
I'll, I'll just say here, thank you Carolyn and Trevor, but for explaining, because I did have, it was a little bit difficult for me to really understand what was going on. So the setbacks are on the three sides that aren't in the front, correct?
Right, right.
And then what is the, and the current frontage requirements are?
I believe it's in the Central Village District is 100.
Okay.
So we're asking to go down to 50 feet, which is essentially, which is essentially like a subdivision bylaw. I mean, you know, subdivision road.
Casey, that's it. She just remembered something she needs to do. But you were saying with the setbacks that those potentially, if there were issues, could be addressed on a case-by-case basis. Why would it not be the same for the frontage?
The planning board would be the one to decide. We would take it to the planning board to decide.
All right. Like Cumberland Farms, you know, it's pre-existing building. So we would come for a site, site plan review. And, you know, we'd have to get a change of use because it's been vacant already for two years. So, you know, that isn't going to meet the setback requirements. So that, and of course, that's only if we buy it and it becomes potentially the library, you know, temporary library spot. But the idea is that, you know, there was just too many. I mean, we just didn't need to worry about the setbacks because the setbacks, like I said, would do depending on what we're doing. I mean, we don't really know what we're going to do with the church and the senior center yet. You know, we're still in the process. But we know we need access to Brayburn. We know we need access to the park. We know we need access to, you know, different potential projects that we have coming down the line.
I'm sorry again for my challenge with this access versus frontage. I mean, this is.
Well, yeah, well, the frontage, instead of having 100 feet, you would, you would essentially reduce it to 50, which is access, is to allow enough space for an access.
And you would prefer to have that as a overall bylaw rather than a case-by-case as the setbacks would be?
Right, that's correct.
Casey, do you want to add to this discussion?
It's really for municipal facilities. And like Carolyn said, there's a lot of projects that are sort of lining up in a queue that we can all see. And I had, I lost my notes. I had a note and it said Brayburn on it, Carol.
Right.
Couldn't remember. So thank you for filling in that blank. But there's certainly access, maybe challenging for Brayburn and has been for years. So things like that could allow the town to proceed with oversight. And I think that was the main thing that the board discussed in many of the conversations we had, certainly with, with council, was maintaining that oversight and collaboration with the planning board. And if necessary, for other permit, with other permit granting authorities.
And Casey, as you've mentioned, council, so council has looked at this.
Yes. Council has reviewed it. And this was the language that was discussed. And she's, once the board approved it, that's what she received, is the language that was discussed with her.
Thank you. All right, other, yes, Denise?
Just had a question, so, you know, I mean, I don't know all the different, oh, you know what? Sorry, I had these little barometric pressure earplugs and I forgot. I might have been having a hard time hearing. You're right. So if you're talking about access and 50, so instead of 100 feet, 50 feet, so it gives more access to get in there, maybe you have to widen the road or something. So does that have any impact on adjacent, existing adjacent residential buildings? Would that be an issue at all for people? So, you know, Brayburn, I know that, you know, I don't know how many houses, but I know there's some homes. Is that going to affect anybody else's property?
We'd have to, you know, what we were going to do was buy a property or have a donation of a property. So, you know, obviously, if you build an access road, it would have, you would have a adjacent properties.
Right. So, I mean, that's my question. You know, is it going to impact someone's property, someone's home? For instance, the park that's, that eventually is going to be built, is that going, is this something that would impact people's property?
No, it won't take anybody's property or impact it. We would just still be on our own property that we own. But it would allow us access in for properties, yeah. For municipal projects.
Okay, but, but is it also with new construction on those municipal properties that it would, the setback wouldn't have to be the same? Is that correct? That it would only have to be 50 instead of 100? I'm just trying to.
Frontage, yes. Frontage would allow us 50 instead of a normal 100 for municipal projects. But setbacks, if we, if we had to change a setback or request a setback, we would only do that coming before your board. And your board would be the only one that would have the authority to approve it. So it wouldn't be something the select board would just do. Jen?
Yeah, I was just going to say that it goes through regular site plan review process. And the select board, I mean, sorry, the planning board would view all of the plans. I mean, it would just say that, let's say you had a property that was, you know, for, I was saying this example earlier, 59, 50 feet, but it was 49. You know, it wouldn't be able to be there. But by giving the, or 100 feet, now you're saying, yeah, 50 feet, we could actually have a different use there, but they would still have to go through site plan review process.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Still, you can still put a subdivision road in with 50 feet. But you would not have to actually put the subdivision road in to gain your frontage.
Okay.
I mean, that's the difference. If we, in the park property, we can put a subdivision road in. And then the frontage is off the subdivision road. But this would allow us not to have to put the subdivision road in to gain the 100 feet of. In other words, we wouldn't have to go in and put a cul-de-sac in, at, in the park to get our 100-foot frontage. It would just give us a 50-foot, you know, access.
Excuse me, go on.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
So, so if it's currently 100 feet and you want to change it to 50 feet, isn't the 50 feet already absorbed in there, right? If it were originally 100 feet, we're bringing it to 50 feet. So that other 50 feet is already absorbed in that, that.
No, what we're saying is we, we would, the minimum frontage would be 50 feet. We would not have to put the subdivision road in to gain our frontage. We would just be allowed to have frontage of 50 feet for our municipal project. So, and the clearest explanation is if we were going to build senior housing in the park place instead of the park, we would put a subdivision road in. And then you would build your housing off the, your frontage would become off your, whatever road you built into the, that property. And, and as the park, we could put a subdivision road in and you have your cul-de-sac. And then you could therefore get your 100-foot of frontage. But we don't want to build a cul-de-sac in the park. We get our front, 100-foot frontage or off Brayburn.
Right.
We don't want to put the cold, go in with just the subdivision road and then build off of that. We would like some flexibility if we were going to put, you know, soccer fields out there. We don't want to have to build a subdivision road with a cul-de-sac to get our 100-foot of frontage to put soccer fields on Brayburn or senior housing or whatever. It just gives us more flexibility. Because you can always, you only need 50 feet to do your subdivision road or whatever the, you know, whatever it takes. But you have to have then put your cul-de-sac on or your, you know, or keep running it to get your frontage.
And also the planning board has the right through the site plan review process to, you know, make some other suggestions for the plans, like screening versus, you know, for your plantings or, you know, you know, all of those things are still in play to help with it. It just, like Carolyn was saying, gives more flexibility for municipal projects on municipal facilities that would make it more appealing for the neighbors and the project.
You know, by right, you just, you can just put your subdivision road in. And, and that, you know, there's no other oversight. But, you know, that does cost money to put in, you know, subdivision road when you, especially if you don't need it. So, you know, we're just looking for flexibility of not putting in the subdivision road. And then, you know, like, like Jen had said, you can put, require screening or whatever. It is because of, then you're, it's just part of the project. It's not by right.
Are there the questions? In my understanding of our discussion tonight is that we would be taking a vote on this verbiage to bring it forward to a public hearing. That is what our next step would be. So this isn't necessarily our final.
No, let's just put it on the public hearing or go through the public hearing process.
So we would, Annalee, you know that chart like I gave you where we would put the dates in? That's what it would start that process? Yeah.
Good chart, good chart. All right.
Casey's chair.
Are there other questions or comments?
I don't see any.
All right, so if I could have a motion to bring this.
Bylaw.
Change, bylaw change to a public hearing. And then we will vote or determine what the date of the public hearing would be. So I need to make.
I make a motion to bring this change to the bylaw to the public hearing.
Thank you, Denise.
Denise Mason.
And the second?
My second.
Thank you, Kathy. So, any other? So, any other discussion?
Can I ask?
Yes.
Here.
Discussion.
Yeah, what are we moving to do? Moving to change setbacks and?
No.
Frontage in municipal?
Facilities.
Yeah, the setbacks are going to remain the same.
And and it would allow us requests to come before the planning board to change them if needed.
All right.
Depending on the project.
Gotcha.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're just deciding that we're going to open a public hearing. I don't even.
That's all.
We don't need to vote for that. We just.
We need to schedule it is, that's where Jennifer comes in. But for purposes, we wanted to have a brief discussion with you all and let you know where, what we were thinking about it. And Annalee, you had asked if, you know, some of us could come and visit with you on it. So that's where the, that's what we would like to do.
Yeah. Yeah, we just wanted to explain that we wanted a little bit of flexibility versus being forced to do certain things.
So really what it's doing is is making a change to the dimensional requirement, like our chart that we have in our zoning bylaw.
And it would be.
In the notes.
In the notes.
And it would be limited to municipal projects.
Yeah, I'm not sure that it actually is footnote nine because we already have a footnote nine, ten and eleven. So.
It's adding a new superscript nine that allows for municipal facilities to to have that notation in the language that's in the second paragraph.
All right, so any more discussion? Well, I guess what we're saying that in fact, we don't have to vote, take it to.
Correct. Yep, it's up to the chair to put it on the board on the schedule.
Okay.
I would believe Annalee that our, the next meeting is fairly full and plus we have to have notice of posting.
Quite full. Right, so, and then the following week is our town meeting, so we don't have a meeting then and we haven't really put it out farther.
Election, you mean?
I mean, yes, I'm sorry, the election, right. So our, the meeting after that, if we were to try to have, replace our regularly scheduled meeting, it would be on May tenth. Is that Monday, May tenth? Does that work for people?
Casey, does that give us enough time before June? I think it would, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it gives us a month.
Okay.
The, since since town meeting is June twelfth, that should give us enough time.
Right.
Okay.
If it's, if it's approved.
Yeah, right, correct.
Yeah, correct.
Or no significant change.
Once it goes through the hearing process, it has to go through the hearing process and the planning board has to make a decision after the hearing.
Trevor and Casey and Carolyn, it was a much better informed conversation having you come, so.
Oh, thank you for having us.
This is no problem. There's so much stuff going on, it's hard to keep up, Annalee.
Right, right. All right, but I think that's it for this part of new business. Next item on new business is talking about new planning board member orientation, Denise?
Yeah, thanks, Annalee. I know, Annalee, and since we're both still new, we've just been on for a year, you know, we we've talked about, you know, we hear bits and pieces and I know we have, you know, we had, oh, we had a couple of trainings, but, you know, I'm just, when individuals who are running for the planning board ask, well, well, what do you do? Is there orientation? Is there training? You know, it was, it was sort of hard to answer that because it is somewhat limited. And so I think, you know, I, we were talking about, it would be nice to have maybe more of a, I shouldn't say standard, but more of a, more of a standard orientation, a little bit more to that. And in addition to that, you know, getting information, I know we talked about this before, different training, you know, different training that's, I know that Furcog, Furcog does some, but I mean, I looked at some and I don't think it's, what they're doing is not necessarily relevant to the planning board, maybe some. So it would be great to have alerts to that, you know, in, you know, timely matters so that we could participate. And then the other thing is, I know we've talked about, you just said it, that Jen, you gave Anna Lee a procedural paper on, I'd like to see all of that. And Rachel, you said that you have a book from however many years ago. And who else has something? Oh, and then Annalee mentioned that Anne Mary, that you had something, so I would be willing to to conduct a work group to look at all of this and try and put something together, a little comprehensive orientation and just other training material, you know, other, you know, cheat sheets, basically. Because I did give Annalee a cheat sheet on Robert's Rules of Order. So, you know, things like that I think are really useful for us to have instead of having to dig into the zoning bylaws for every single thing. Sorry, Jen.
Well, I was just gonna say, I think the select board would be very supportive of having, you know, a land use little seminar of an hour or two with our land use lawyer, just to go over some really common things. I I know from my almost twenty years on the planning board, you know, you get an awful lot of experience over the years, but, you know, you you just forget things because not, you don't have a lot of applications that come in on a regular basis. So I think a couple hours every year with our town lawyer, just going over some of the basics, just review is really, really important. And and then you're not, then everybody's on the same page or starts with the same page. And so just like every July, you know, you you have a, you know, a little get together or something and just, or set up a date that is regular after, you know, the election. So you have, you know, you you capture everybody. And and the July is usually the new fiscal year. So if you did something after, you know, the elections and then the new fiscal year and you budgeted for that every year or put it in our budget for, you know, under legal expense, I think that's a very good idea. And then, but I'm not suggesting what you're not doing is a good idea is to pull things together, like Jen can put stuff together because she's had some experience. You can pull it together, but then, and then, then you're informed a little bit to ask, you know, a land use lawyer for a just further discussion.
Right.
Jen?
Yeah, so the CC, I think it's CCPT, it, they have a training, it's, and it's very informative. I've been to it and unfortunately I left my, I thought I was leaving municipal work, but here I am. And it it's very informative for board members to go to, so we would just need to put that into our budgets about going to those types of training. I also think that it's important, the the book that Rachel said that she used to get, that each new planning board member gets a book that has our zoning bylaw on it, has our general bylaw in it, has the, why is it, what did you say Denise? What you said, Ann, that you gave to Annalee?
Oh, oh, a cheat sheet on Robert's.
Oh, the cheat sheet.
Sorry, sorry, thank you. Robert's Rules, like, that it has all of those, it also has every single one of the applications that the district is having to review and the requirements for each of those applications. And we should have a meeting prior to the person have it going to their first planning board meeting so that they understand and everything is in one binder. We've sort of been sort of piecemealing it together and Annalee's been calling and checking in with all of us and she's doing a great job. Thank you, Annalee. Because, you know, we're, we don't have our planner, but we're doing the best that we we can to get all the information for the planning board. But I think that that's important to move forward and I'm willing to work with you Denise in in gathering all that information so that we get binders and give it to people. And, you know, whether it's something that becomes a agenda item for every planning board meeting to say, okay, whether it's somebody on the board or staff that looks to see what trainings are coming up and how much they're going to cost and so that that can be part of our discussions. Right now, we're trying to get our feet on the ground running and we, there was talk about having particular meetings on one day and then, you know, growth meetings for the planning board, planning, other activities on another meeting, you know, if we met twice a month. You know, then you could do those type of administrative things on that second date. But I'm.
Right.
Very.
Another thing, Jen, I mean, and you talked about it, and I'm not sure whether this was the the timing for like an A and R and, you know, when you receive it, how many days? You know, that cheat sheet, sort of the flow chart, I think is great. I'm all about, I love timelines. I like to know, here we are today, where do we, where, and what do we have to achieve in between?
Yeah. Different, depending whether it's a public hearing or a public meeting and and the difference between an A and R and what you all have to know as far as what you're looking at in those maps. As far as setbacks and area and frontage and, I mean, there's only so much, I mean, we have to enforce it as town officials and that's our, we're trying to help you guide it. But just making it at your fingertips so that you all can do the research would be wonderful.
Rachel and Mary and Max, as all three of you are approaching your busy seasons with end of school and planting season, how could you help to those of us who don't know, we don't know what we don't know. So, you know, Rachel has this big binder, I mean, could we borrow your binder? How how can we pick your brains at a time when your brain is frizzled?
I did get the binder, there was a binder that was in Sue's office, so she has it. So we just have to weed out the old things and make a new thing, like it doesn't have, that can just sort of be a guide for what we can use, like what was in it in the past, but really a lot of that information is outdated. So to gather all new information and I can work with Denise and and make something that we can have a index that whenever a new board member comes in, it's all refreshed. So then you take out your bad, you know, the sections that are, let's say our zoning bylaw is going to change, right? So we have to take out the old bylaw and put in the new bylaw, you know, so that should be something that's done periodically so we don't have outdated binders.
I'm ready when you are. Whenever, we can, we can talk and figure something out.
I'm there every day.
Well, you know, we can set up a time. I mean, I I have a lot of time on my hands now, so obviously, you know, you don't. So, you know, we can, we can work out whatever. And I don't, I don't recall, Annalee, what you said, that Anne Mary, you have some useful information too. I don't.
I think Anne Mary had mentioned some flow charts on how to go through site plan review and and whatnot, so.
Yeah, Jennifer and I have talked about that in the past and just like creating systems so that nothing falls through the cracks. And so we make sure that we're asking for everything and we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's.
Yeah.
That would be great.
I have a feeling that this will be the first of maybe many iterations, but it'll be good to get.
But you know, Annalee, I mean, I I think it would be beneficial for all of us, not only planning board members, but also town employees. So, I mean, granted, I agree, you're doing a great job, Annalee, but, you know, it may reduce the phone calls and the emails back and forth. So that. Yeah, yeah.
It's definitely a learning curve and just a process and trying to make sure that we get a lot of these details ahead of time so that the planning board has a very clear view of what they're looking at when it comes to the board.
And I never got a folder, a binder, so I would, you know.
A lot of people didn't.
Pat Smith put this together for us.
Yeah.
That's how old it is.
We will get new binders, well.
It was a one-time-only sale.
Twenty thirteen.
What's in it, Rachel? That's the question.
Oh, we did it back in the eighties. Come on, guys. Cheat sheets here somewhere.
Well, great, thank you, thank you.
Right.
Thank you, I think it'll be great.
All right, so in terms of, since since we're really talking about process here, if Denise and Jen send us updates, because otherwise it looks like we may not be able to have a real conversation about this again until the May tenth meeting, because I think the April twenty sixth is going to be pretty full.
Well, why don't you just contact me, Denise? We can make a time to meet and sort of make a, you know, a checklist of
Sure.
would need to be in the binder and we can, you know, I could loop Sue in and she can help also gather this information. So even if we have it on our S drive and has all the documents there in a list and it's easy to then go and print them out when we have new board members.
Okay, sounds great, thanks.
And since this is procedural, I don't think we're struggling with open meeting laws in terms.
Just a work group.
Right.
Right. Well, I'll just be working with Denise and then we can present it at another meeting if it's on the agenda.
Yeah, we'll, we may, well, we should have some new members in, at our June meeting, so.
Yeah.
Kathy can be in charge of orientation since you had such a good one, right Kathy?
Sure.
Is there any other business not reasonably anticipated forty hours prior? Not that I know of.
Could I, I just have a question. I know this was on the agenda last time and we did talk and and I'm going to work with Anne Mary and is it Karen? Karen on the Bloody Brook Planning, Clean Up With The Source To See, but I was just curious if anybody else had joined in that effort so far? And I think Trevor was also.
No one has reached out to me, but I implore anyone, you know, we're gonna be talking Wednesday evening. And if you reach out to me, I'm happy to send you an invite. I would love to hear from.
I got the invite. I just wanted to let you know that I, I should be able to make it, but I've got also a public hearing for the Deerfield School Budget that night. But I will be there, I will be there before that, so I should be able to stay for a bit.
Anne Marie, if you, Anne Mary, if you send me an invite, I will come as a mosquito district commissioner.
Fantastic.
Did everybody hear what our mascot's gonna be? A dragonfly, because dragonflies eat mosquitoes.
I know, I love dragonflies.
Right, Carolyn?
They eat about a hundred mosquitoes a day.
That's our, that's our out plan if anyone wants.
The little beer stein?
That's another idea. No, I'm kidding.
With a deer fly and a candle and a beer and.
Which Carolyn was asking us about what we could do for an emblem. So we were brainstorming. The seal with a dragonfly or sugar loaf with a dragonfly. I love the dragonfly idea. I'm a hundred percent behind that. So all we're gonna do is find somebody who can draw.
So Trevor, I need you to find out the person, because I sent an email, nobody responded to me because I would like to do a mural on a wall that I've gotten permission from the store owner or the building owner to put a mural up. And wouldn't it be great to put a dragonfly and people can do their little selfies with the dragonfly wings behind them?
Love it.
It's a great idea and it's a very not pretty space, so.
On the town website and ask for submissions and like.
Yeah, I was thinking we could get one of the students from the schools and so I reached out and, but nobody returned mine. But I got the business owner to agree to it and the, and the business, no, the owner of the property agreed to it and then the business owner agreed to it. So we're, we're like good to go for that, but we then need to paint it and then get this, an artist to to do it. And we thought a student would be wonderful.
I know just a student and I will reach out to her.
Then of my way, because this is.
I sure will.
Getting it done.
All right.
But if we made it, put it out there on Facebook.
Yeah, I agree with Anne Mary. I agree with Anne Mary. Let's post it on.
And it might be a little bit more woodenable if anybody else wanted a shot.
All right, so that's what we have to talk about tomorrow, Jennifer.
Later here, I'm getting all excited and.
I want to know what building.
Can I tell you?
Yes.
The, the, where the pizza place, Primos is.
Primos is.
I have fantasizing about that. I'm so psyched.
Next to Cumberland Farms, the, the.
Right.
Cumberland Farms, so there's that big wall.
Oh, that would be great.
The owner, and then the owner's dad manages it and he said that his, they're willing to do that. And then the Primos agreed also that they don't mind and I think. Primos agreed also that they don't mind and I think yeah.
That's awesome.
So if you go and look, um, oh gosh, Casey, I'm terrible at this. What's the name of the place across the bridge that we get our sandwich, like, to sandwiches?
Shh, um, Bridge, Bridge.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Which side?
No.
Oh, you mean on this side?
Boots.
Wild Roots.
Wild Roots.
No, Wild Roots.
Wild Roots.
Wild Roots just went to Greenfield and they put a butterfly on their building in Greenfield. And so then I thought, oh, dragonfly.
Yes.
In in Deerfield.
And so an idea.
I told you about dragonflies. Do too much now.
It's a great spot to take selfies, because you're right there.
Yeah.
Well, and in.
I was getting food at, at Johnny Figs and turned around and looked at it the other night and went, she's right, that needs to be painted.
I was driving home one day and I go, oh, that's a good mural wall.
It's great, something simple. Haven't, you've seen, you must have seen the crow on the side of the Salvation Army building next to Hope and Olive. I love that.
Yes.
It's so, it's so simple, but it's so nice.
All right.
Excellent.
Good enthusiasm, good, good. Oh, Deerfield, extra.
I know.
Right, so.
We will get dragonflies.
We are having tree public hearings on the twenty-sixth on solar site review, site plan review bylaws and Treehouse Brewing Brewery. So everybody's going to have fun reading between now and then. And then on the tenth, we will have our frontage public hearing and most likely I would imagine some follow-up for Treehouse and whatever else. Um, Jen?
Yeah, I was just making a suggestion of your pla, if you want to make a placement. Casey, did, would that matter, which way that they hear those on the agenda?
Say that again, Jennifer.
Is there an importance of placement on the agenda? Like if they put Treehouse first and then did the bylaws after? Or do you think that it should be the bylaws and then Treehouse?
I think it's up, to be honest with you, um, usually the chair approves the agenda, so I would.
He decides.
It's what I do with, Carolyn and I usually consult on those things. And when Trevor was chair, Trevor and I consulted on those things.
Okay, just to keep that in mind.
Right, thank you.
Did, did Tree, oh, I'm sorry, did Treehouse say how long their presentation would take? That may make a difference.
Well, they're going to be, they're going to be presenting on the thirteenth for the select. So, I highly encourage you to go and watch that and have an overview and then to read the packet that's been left out in the foyer for all the planning board members. It's very good and it's very informative and complete um, as far as requirements that are on our application. So I think that if, if that's all researched ahead of time, a lot of your questions will be answered.
Um, we have a public hearing at six o'clock for the Capitol Improvement Committee. So I would say Treehouse is anywhere between um, six-thirty and quarter seven probably.
Right.
Would be, would be, they would be coming for.
On the thirteenth, yeah.
Right.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow night.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh god, that's right, it's.
I know, it's the twelfth. I didn't even realize it was the twelfth until today.
No, I had.
April's apparently half over.
Right, no, I have that meeting already. I've got it, yeah, in my calendar.
All right, um, so we have a motion to adjourn.
Uh, and.
I move that we adjourn.
I second it.
Okay. Any discussion, uh, all in favor?
Bye.
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 I applaud your enthusiasm, Rachel.
Thank you.
All right.
Have a nice night, everybody.
So good night.
Thanks.
Thank you.